I would like to bring this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM, location? Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11th Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present. I would like to recognize, hold on a moment, I would like to recognize Admiral Vincent Short. Did he leave? Hey, let's see, I'd like to welcome all of you guys tonight that are here and being a part of this work session of the Board of Supervisors that have been passed on, if you will. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Huh?
Mr. Warren asked me to read this very brief letter that gives some insight about why he's not here tonight. It says, Chairman Davis, I would like to extend my apologies to you and the entire Board and the citizens of Pennsylvania County for my absence at tonight's meeting. I had made plans to be out of town 14 months ago prior to my knowledge of the necessity to change the date of our regular meeting. I take my responsibilities to serve the citizens of Pennsylvania County very seriously, not only attending Board meetings but other committee meetings. Again, I extend my apologies to everyone sincerely. Your Honor, Robert W. Warren. I've given a copy of this to Ms. McCluster for the next nine minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to take this moment, if you will, to join me in having a moment of silence, please. Those who can, if you will, stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to ask the Board if there are any other items to be added to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Under new business, I'd like to add item 12E Legislative Committee Recommendation, fire an EMS, and also under appointments is item 13C Pennsylvania County Service Authority.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that's course of the question.
Yes, sir.
Can we have everybody present?
We can. If you remember in the past, we could not, but we changed the bylaws so we can discuss the laws. All right, any further discussion? Okay.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimously, six, one absent. Item six, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, did that?
We've already did that?
No.
Sorry, sorry.
Me?
Mr. Chairman, much more for the agenda.
All right. Motion by Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
All right. Motion carries six, one absent. The consent agenda, I don't have to read all of these, do we? We need to just move right on. Thank you, okay. Going to number eight, President Tate.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Pardon me, Mr. Blackstock, I'm glad you called that in there. We have a motion by Mr. Blackstock for the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimously, one missing. Item number nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the Board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the Chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the Board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the Board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next Board meeting, absent Chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. All right, our first guest tonight is Mr. Sterling Barnard. Yes, sir. Step to the podium and begin to the mic if you will.
I'm Sterling Barnard, in the Callens Climate District, I don't know what you call it. I just have a state road, three tenths of a mile. I have talked with all the citizens that live on it, landowners, of course. We have a scout troop that comes in and out at least minimal of, once a week. It is a dirt road, it's gravelled somewhat by the state, they have a lot of problems getting the gravel, and of course with all these repairs the past six months from floods and everything, it's gotten ridiculous over the years. And I'm requesting and so are the rest of the landowners to see if I can possibly, you know, borrow gravel.
Thank you, Mr. Barnard. Mr. Barnard's the only one that has signed up. Is anyone else that would like to speak that has not signed up?
Mr. Barnard?
Present.
Could you give me County Attorney the Road, the name of the Road?
Sure, it's a...
Just give it to him.
You can just try to talk to me, I'm going to start.
Okay.
He's working.
That's not the one.
Item number 10, Public Hearings. Rezoning Public Hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of Pennsylvania County's zoning ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its hospitality. I would like to give this, turn this over to Mr. Greg Sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will read the narrative and then we'll enter the public hearing. Case R-19-005, Charles and Carol Balderson have petitioned to rezone a total of 16.02 acres, two parcels of land located on Highway 40, East Retton Road in the Bannister Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent parcel of land already zoned A1. Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll open this public hearing up at 7:10 PM.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Balderson here to represent the petition.
Okay.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I have no comments, I'll answer any questions. Any questions from the Board? Right here, none. You may have a seat. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In case...
Chair, you need to close the public hearing.
Oh, pardon me, pardon me, I need to close this at 7:15. It was 7:10, but I, we just opened up at 7:10, so we close it at 7:10.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, sir. Mr. Miller?
In case R-19-005, I would like to recommend approval of the request to rezone from R1 to A1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Blackstock. Is there any discussion from the Board? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion carries, six present. Case number two, Mr. Sides.
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-006, Union Grove Amish Church Trustees and Chatham Amish Church Trustees have petitioned to rezone a total of 19.67 acres, four parcels of land located on State Road 605, Walker's Well Road in the Callens Retton Election District, from C1 Conservation District to M1 Industrial District Light Industry for the manufacture of roof trusses. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the properties are rezoned to M1, then all uses listed under Section 35-383 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
By the way, Mr. Balderson, your land has been rezoned. I open this public hearing up at 7:13 PM.
Mr. Chairman, Jason Schrock is here to represent the petition.
You have any comments to make, sir?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all right. You can have a seat, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for this case.
All right. Thank you for reminding me to close the public hearing at 7:14 PM. All right, what's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for case R-19-006, that we have 19.67 acres be rezoned from C1 Conservation District to M1 Industrial District Light Industry.
We had a motion by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there any discussion from the Board members? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Vote carries six, four, one absent. Property's been rezoned, young man. Case number three.
H-R-19-007, Donian and Olivia Wilson have petitioned to rezone 30.66 acres located on State Road 856 Cobb's Knob Road in the Tunstall Election District, from M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to A1 Agricultural District for the agricultural purpose of planting trees. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sides. I open this public meeting at 7:15 PM.
Mr. Donian Wilson is here to represent the petition.
You have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for the public hearing, so we may close the public hearing.
Thank you, I close this public hearing at 7:15. What's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-007, I'd like to make a question, will you rezone this property from B1 to A1?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Barber, and a second by Dr. Miller. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Carries six, four, one absent. Mr. Wilson, your property's been rezoned, thank you. Case number four, Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, case R-19-008, Truway Deliverance Church has petitioned to rezone .83 of an acre located off State Road 723, Old Quarry Road on Oak Crest Road in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to V1 Business District, limited for a child daycare center. Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the property is rezoned to V1, all uses listed under Section 35-346 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
I open this public hearing up at 7:16 PM. What's the nature of the Board?
Ms. Betty Brandon is here to represent the petition.
Hello.
Hey. You got anything you'd like to add, madam?
No, I do not.
Well, Betty, thank you for coming to my...
Thank you.
You may have a seat, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have no one else signed up for the public hearing, so you may close the public hearing.
I close the public hearing at 7:16. Now, what's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In case R-19-008, I'd like to move for the approval of the request to rezone from R1 to B1.
Motion by Dr. Miller, seconded by Tim, Mr. Barber. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion carries. Property's been rezoned, thank you. Case number five, Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, case R-19-009, Carol Ann Bennett and Jason Eddie Bennett have petitioned to rezone 12.46 acres located off Highway 40, East Retton Road in the Callens Retton Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. And this is one of the cases that we spoke of recently in a work session where there were some discrepancies in some of the older records. The county's GIS showed this property as being zoned A1 Agricultural. Based on that information, the survey divided the property, which would have been allowed according to the will of Sammy Bennett. In reviewing the map, it was found that the property is actually correctly zoned R1 on the official zoning maps. But to probate the will and rectify the mistake in the county's records, an application has been submitted to rezone the property from R1 to A1. The Planning Commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and, Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
Thank you. I open this public hearing at 7:20 PM.
Ms. Diane Moon is here to represent the petition.
Is Miss Moon present? Not here. So now I close this meeting at 7:20 PM.
And we have no one else signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. I'll just offer that Ms. Moon was at the Planning Commission meeting, and she did explain that they're selling the estate, and the only way to probate the will and divide the property was doesn't currently have roads running, is to rezone it to A1 Agricultural. And the with opposition was there was a neighbor that is currently zoned R1, had some questions about the future of the property. The family explained that they have no future plans for the property, it just goes to the family heirs, and it can't be will probated or the property divided unless it's rezoned to A1 Agricultural. And you may notice in your board packet, certainly your will, but you may notice there is A1 property adjacent to this tract.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. What's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, prior to making a motion, I'd like to ask Mr. Sides, was this the case that we also waived the advertising fee to the applicant based on the county's mistake in the system?
That is actually the next case.
Okay, so this is not... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for case R-19-009, that we rezone 12.46 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimously. Case number six, Mr. Sides.
Yes, case R-19-010, Marvin and Margaret Hilton have petitioned to rezone a total of 19.12 acres, two parcels of land located on Highway 58 West Martinsville Highway and on State Road 869 Stony Mill Road, Red Silver Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. The county's original zoning map showed these properties as A1 Agricultural District, and the property records showed that the properties were R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. In 2010, the original zoning maps were changed from A1 to R1 to match the computer records. This is the one that we discussed. To rectify the mistake in the county's records, an application has been submitted to rezone the properties from R1 to A1. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under 35-178 are permitted. Staff summary is in your board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Sides.
Mr. Chairman, you may close the public hearing. I mean, open the public hearing.
Much more confusion. I open this public hearing at 7:25.
Mr. Hilton? Mr. Hilton here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. And I close this public meeting at 7:25. What's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to provide a motion to approve the rezoning of two parcels, a total of 19.12 acres, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Scares, and a second by Mr. Palmer. Is there any further discussion?
Did not say the case. I guess I should have said case R-19-010. I'll amend my motion to put that...
One, second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
The motion carries. Case number seven, Mr. Sides.
Case R-19-011, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors have petitioned to rezone 14.89 acres located on State Road 719, East Whit Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District, from A1 Agricultural District to RMF Residential Multi-Family District, to renovate the old Blair School into loft apartments. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Once the property is rezoned to RMF, then all uses listed under Section 35-280 are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing.
Thank you. I open this public hearing at 7:26.
Ms. Wilson, do you have any comments to represent the county on this petition?
At the Board's request, we filed this rezoning petition to allow for multifamily use of the old Blair School. We think it is a great and productive use of this property and preserves the heritage and history of the facility, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we request that this, I believe, be rezoned.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have representatives from a company that has proposed the former project, and I think they would like to tell a little bit about what their plans are.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to come back this evening to speak for Oregon Public about our proposed project, the old Southside High School. The Landmark Group, Landmark Asset Services, commonly known as Landmark Group, is a third-generation company, based out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. We have been in business and we're on our third generation for over 30 years. Dwayne Anderson passed away four years back from Alzheimer's and handed the torch over to us to continue his commitment of revitalization and rural communities, and that's what brought us to the county was Blair's School. As I said, we've been in business over 30 years. We've developed over 100 projects. Currently in our portfolio, we have 85 senior, senior and family, multifamily and commercial units. We have developed in nine states with 85% of that being in the three states in Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. I have kind of shown them our footprint around. Schools, would you put this list on here to give you just a list of the schools that we've developed over the past 30 years, to show that this would not be our first revitalization and use of this school? Some of the projects we've done, give you a little example, Alamo Mall Central School in North Carolina, some before and after pictures, was a 53-unit senior project in the center of downtown Alamo Mall. Ashboro Mill Loss, again, was part of the downtown revitalization that continues today. We've been invited back to do a senior project that's attached to their new senior facility. This was our 72-unit family project that we built right off the cusp of downtown, and it was a fiduciary of all sorts of additional revitalization downtown Ashboro, and as I say, it continues today and over the next 10 years. They have a great downtown revitalization plan. Our vision for Southside Loss, we've been working with the Southside High Alumni and also the soccer club there, many of you know, to see what we could do to revitalize the school, save the historic structure, its fabrics, and to allow the community to continue to use the property for decades to come. Revitalization of this horse house, Southside School Complex, to include housing for families. It would be 55 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, or a mix, is 11 1s, 29 2s, and 15 3-bedroom units. Auditorium, there's about 10,500 square feet of commercial space planned for... for the existing complex in addition to a field building out back to source of the soccer teams stuff. The auditorium consists of about 8,000 of that commercial square footage. And then there's other areas within the project that has been set aside for the soccer club themselves to have their possessions and meeting areas and offices. Southside High School alumni will also be utilizing the auditorium through county release and working with county and those two groups so that everybody can have an opportunity to share in that revitalization and their history and heritage of what they knew and grew up with at that school. All right, this is kind of vision of our site plan and kind of cutting out the main building from the rest of it. Show you the parking areas. One thing I did not get on here before, it will include picnic shelter with grills, playground seating areas, and raised planting beds throughout the site. And give you overall, I didn't want to try to, not to make this too long, but I know this is a little small, but this is overall use of space. You can see the infield of the multifamily units and then the auditorium and some area in the back left for commercial spaces to use in the public and community. Second floor, you see Howard Brown Building. Second floor in the gymnasium and bridges over Goodwin's with the Deresport. Four outside pictures of the school, rendering of what it could look like when it's new. But this is not going to do it justice after revitalized what this school should look like. So we added some other ones. Here's our inside of what we found when we toured the school, and Mr. Wilson, a few others. And it's a very, very interesting school. A lot of great historic fabric, teachers' closets, chalkboard. There's just a ton of historic fabric left that will be saved. We also plan to have this property listed on National Register of Historic Places. And we have signed a contract and started that process. And Heather Fernbach will be coming up to the county to interview as many people that's willing to talk to about the history of the school. Here's after inside, our vision. These were taken from Alphamore Central School, similar in the architecture of the inside. So we added these, kind of goes from what it is now to what it could be, how we can make it happen. Financing, we've started about 8, between 8 and 9 millions for the total project, and it has went up over 10 million. We did our energy study and put our energy modeling together and discovered that we were not meeting the required hers rating of efficiency. So we kicked our HDA systems out, brought in mini splits, heat pump water heaters unless we could get circuit, unless we could get gas for water heating or circulation system, simple circulation system of water heating. Our financing will be through VHDA, 90% tax credits, also federal and state historic tax credits, which will bring in about 8 million, 8 to 8.8 million dollars in private equity or investment. The additional 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars needed for the project will be done through private financing and mortgages. Important deadlines, they're coming up. County and a lot of people worked really hard to get us to this point. We just want to say thank you to all of them of getting us here and working for you. The full application for VHDA is due March 14th. They're pretty quick in their announcements. Their final rankings announcement is end of May, and then the board approves the final rankings first part of June. So we'll know rather quickly if tax credits are awarded. And then at that time, we would move forward to go public with the tax credits and bring an investor on board to purchase those tax credits, come up with the equity, and meantime securing construction financing and permanent financing for the project all upfront. Construction would start, if awarded, construction would start the second quarter of next year, in the first quarter, second quarter of 2020. Completion, we should be able to move our first residents in May to June of 2021. Benefits for Pennsylvania County, go back to the pictures. It's taken very important historic structure. Means a lot to a lot of people and the community and the statement. It's bringing in 10 million dollars worth of investment in private mortgages for the project. It will create some jobs throughout construction. We'll also be creating jobs for site management, maintenance, mowing yards, cleaning of the inside. It reduces the carry cost of the county just to get it off the county's books. It puts it on the tax books, so now it creates revenue, not only in taxes, but also in usages of utilities. And it also brings in more families into the southern part of the county that could make an economic impact with having those pockets in that area. References that I put on the back, anybody's welcome to call and ask about us. And I just wanted to try to make that quick. That way I could open up if anybody had any questions that I might be able to answer tonight.
Sir. Would you speak a little bit about the residential portions again? These are mid to upper level living areas as opposed to lower economic strategy.
This is intended to be for working families, mid-modern income families, which range from, I don't know how many people's in the family on a one-bedroom, one to two people, to a three-bedroom, five people. Range is anywhere from 15,000 to, I think it goes upwards of 36,000 to 37,000 a year income, and it is restricted on those incomes. If you're making more than that, you're not qualified to live at the project. It is not a subsidized property in the sense of there, we don't pay you rent. You don't come there and your rent's based off of your income. They are separate. It's just the targeting of the incomes is the restriction under Section 42 that we have to follow. The apartments, as I said, that we went through energy modeling. So we'll have high-efficiency lighting, heat pumps, water heaters, appliances. We will improve the existing windows. We will keep the existing windows, refurbish them, add extra windows to the inside to help the efficiency. The one-bedrooms range from 650 square feet upwards of 710. I think they average at about 660 to 670. Your two-bedrooms are from 700 or 800 to 950 square feet. Your three-bedrooms, square foot averages are going to range from 910 square feet all the way up there to 1,200 square feet. Inside the units, we'll have washer-drower hookups. As I said, energy star appliances, lighting, walk-in closets. Accessibility, that's one thing I do want to point out with the project we are building with the intent that if there's ever a need to update the apartment for accessibility, we can do that. Our bathrooms will already be enlarged useful space. And kitchen will already be large enough for wheelchair accessibility in those areas along with the passage ways to get into your bathrooms and your bedrooms using 36-inch wide doors. The other thing that I want to bring up is the amenities. We'll have computer rooms, exercise rooms, laundry, onsite management. There'll be a community room with a kitchenette, public restrooms inside of the building, and outdoor amenities listed earlier, playgrounds, picnic shelters, grills, sitting areas, and raised flowerpots.
Mr. Chairman, you have the board?
Yes, sir.
Just got a comment. Based on the pictures and I've served on the property committee and the board supervisors in years past, the county, we, as a public body, would allow that building to fall into disrepair. And it's an embarrassment. I cannot believe, when I first viewed the property, that we had allowed over numerous years to allow that property to come into the situation it had. And I think some of the pictures you shared tonight pretty much lays out the picture of how the disrepair it seemed. And that building has a special place in the African-American community in a historical, of a historical nature. When things weren't like they were, are today. It's an important building for the crowd of African-American friends here in the county. And I see this as a way, I don't know that we could ever afford to do what we should have been doing all along. This is a way out for us and the building to be preserved and also to be utilized by all the community. So I'm excited about this project. I mean, this is one of those things that just shows up, showed up one day.
For better or lack of words.
And I'm like, when I was first approached about this project, I couldn't believe it. It's too good to be true, so I started reading and I did a presentation to the board. I'm really excited about this for the community. And I think it's a win-win. It also provides housing. This is not, like what Mr. Mill, Dr. Mill was getting at, this is not just for low-income people. It's for working-class people. What we are in this county, a lot of working-class people, hard workers. Housing for those people to live that they can afford. I'm excited about it. And I just want to say thank you. I hope this project wins approval, and I hope we move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman, how about parking? If your 55 residences are occupied, and I'm not familiar with the soccer club. If they were to have an event or if there was something in the auditorium, I believe, that's open to the community, do we have additional parking to support that?
We, parking could be an issue throughout the project. There's a lot of space that could be utilized for parking on the site plan. We are utilizing about every square feet that we possibly can of existing parking, and we'll also expand on that as well a little bit. We're continuing, our architects continuing to work to do some stuff around the back so that they can get in another 10, 15 additional parking spots. When you look at the land, and it's all what we're going to be building on, but there's some side areas that additional parking could be added in the future if there's a big issue. On the site itself, there's about 127. Before we left to come up this afternoon, I believe we were up to about 140. And then off-site, there's an additional 10 or 15. So we're about 160, which is a lot of parking, but you're right, it may not be enough. And we're going to work with the soccer league and alumni and the county to, I don't want to say control, that's a bad word, because it's hard to control, but to come up with solutions if it does become a problem.
Any further discussion? I do like it because of the soccer that's going to be still allowed there. Then the $1 million demolition fee is going to cost the county to get rid of that facility, and we can still breathe new life into it. And I do think you had mentioned in the past, community events being held there as well. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. With the revitalization of the auditorium, I didn't count the seats, but there's 500-plus seats in that auditorium. It'll be brought back to life. And the auditorium and other areas of the project will be at least held by the county for a, now $100 a year. It'd be pennies for that space and up to the county to share in the benefit of having that lease and that revitalized auditorium.
Any further comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the public hearing, we do have two residents signed up to speak.
Won't you stay tight and if you need to rebut anything, or you want to ask for it, you can have it after the two years.
And the first citizen to sign up for the case is Wayne Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I live in the Chatham Blair's District of Pennsylvania County. I would like to speak against the rezoning and the sale of this property. You know already that I'm concerned about the schools in Pennsylvania County. If this property can be renovated for apartments, it can be renovated for school again, too. There are two considerations I'd like you to look at. Tunstall High School is way overcrowded right now. Twin Springs is full, Southside is full. Sooner or later, the school board is going to be in front of you looking for money for another school. Another thing that you need to look at is the Berryhill Industrial Park. I keep hearing reports from members of this board and other people that things are getting ready to happen at the industrial park. When that does happen, we're going to need some more schools. And this building is in a perfect place for a school. It might need, it will need some renovation. It might need another gym, that kind of thing. But it's a good, solid, sturdy old building. The roof needs some work and various things, of course. Sooner or later, probably sooner, the school board is going to be here looking for money for another school building. I'd like to speak, I am speaking against the rezoning and against the sale. What I would like for you to do at least is to put this off and think about it some more because the schools are probably going to need that building sooner or later, probably a lot sooner than many of us think. So I'd like for you to put this off and think about it some more. I'm sorry that I didn't come sooner. I didn't know about it until I saw the announcement in the Chatham paper last week. So please put this off and think about it. Once it's rezoned and sold, you can't go back. Another month or two is not going to be any difference. It won't make any difference. But it might give you a chance to think about what's going on here a little more. I'm not trying to say you haven't thought about it, but I think these two considerations, the overcrowding of schools on the south end of the county and the effect on the schools of the Berryhill Industrial Park. Please think about that. Put this off at least for a month or two. And I'd be willing to talk with any of you about it in any more detail that you want to talk about. Any questions for now?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Chairman, our next citizen signed up to speak is Edward Hairston.
And let me just say, as Mr. Hairston is approaching voting, any person that's addressing the board on the public hearing should step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency of non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted for the chairman, shall limit his or her address three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time, unless considered the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent the chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who's not signed up. Okay, sir, thank you.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. My name is Edward Hairston. I'm a resident of Cascade, Virginia, and I'm in the Tunstall District. And I'm here tonight to comment on the project that's proposed for Southside, Old Southside High School. Since I'm a graduate of Southside High School, it has a lot of sentimental value to me. I've learned a lot there. I graduated in 1966. And it was very enjoyable with the time I spent. And it means a lot to me, the building does. And I know someone else has brought up about schools, we need schools, but this should have been done a long time ago if we were going to keep it as a school. have been done a long time ago if we were going to keep it as a school. But right now, I'd like to see the building preserved, and I talked to John and the people from Landmark. They showed me, and Stanley Adams, who's here with me tonight from Edel Alumnus, and we looked at some of the project that they did, and it looked very, very nice. I think it would be a good representation for our school and our community. As some of the supervisors have said, it's something that we should do to preserve the heritage. I have in my hand a copy of resolutions that were done by this board back in 1999, October 99. I'm very, I think Mr. Barber was the chairman at the time, and I'll leave a copy here for the board, as well as the history of South Side High School. I'm going to leave a copy of that, too, for the board to look at. Because it was in this book that was done, celebrating 50 years, golden years of South Side High School. You know, Whitman School is still standing. Browne School is still standing. And we're the only ones that have a school that was threatened to be torn down because of the, the, the lack of keeping it up. I think Browne looks good. Whitman, the building looks good. We would like to have our building the same way. And with this project, I think it's wonderful, from what I've seen, and from what I've discussed with other alumni, it would be something that we'd be very much in favor of, and would look for your support to keep it open to the community. This November, we're planning to have another reunion, and we're using Chatham, the Agriculture Center, we used it several times for our reunion. We'd like to go back to South Side, the old building there. Any part of it we can get in would bring back memory. So if you can relate to that, we appreciate your help to support this all the way through. And, and I'd like to ask this question. I asked John, how did they find out about South Side? Somebody from Danville told them about it. I think we should cooperate with, with Danville. I've always said, when I was on the school board, we should work together to find out about these things early, and not just do our own thing all the time. So I think if we do more communicating one another, it would be a big help. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for what the alumni does.
Chairman, I have no one else that's signed up to speak.
So I close this meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
At 7:50, 7:50 PM. And, yes, sir. Dr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman. In case R-19-001, I would like to recommend approval of a request, read zone from R1, I'm sorry, from A1 to R.
All right, you made that motion on your computer. Seconded by Mr. Barber. Seconded by Tim Barber. Is any other discussion that needs to be made?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to make a comment. Fifteen years I've been on this board, this county has talked about what to do with this building. And I, I can't think of a better use for this building. I think it enhances the community. I'd like to thank Mr. Hairston, and Mr. Adams, and Mr. Clark. I know Mr. Harry Clark worked on this project, brought a lot to him. I actually went to that school in eighth grade, so it's got some history to me, too. And it's, seeing this render, and it'd be nice to see this building what it looks like, what it could be. And I, I think, I can't think of a better use. I'm glad we didn't make a hasty decision in the past for what to do with the building when we were trying to, not able to do. And that's why we always consulted with this alumni, and I'm glad we've come to this point. I think this is about as good a use as we could think. It brings it back to life. I'm excited about the project.
I would make a comment, I went to Blair's myself, and the fact I was the only one in that, that book, it had a polka dot shirt on. Don't go and look it up, don't go look it up, please. Please. I don't know where I got that thing. Anyway, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on, public hearings. Elderly and indigent real estate exemption revision, Mr. Vaden Hunt, Esquire.
Thank you, Chairman. You've seen this now, I think, three times, and, and what this public hearing is proposing is to make changes to Pennsylvania County Code Section 6-5, 6-65 through 8, as allowed by Virginia Code Section 58.1, 32 to 15. What this allows is that any person that qualifies for elderly or indigent real estate tax exemption, if they have a change of circumstance during the year, they don't get kicked out for the full year. It's prorated based on how long they've been in the system. This is allowed by state code, it's supported by county staff, and it's supported by Ms. Shirley Hammack. And so the county staff recommends, following the, the required public hearing, the county staff recommends the board adopt the proposed revisions to Pennsylvania County Code Section 6-6 as presented. And these changes can be found highlighted in yellow on page 174 of your packet.
I open this, is that correct? I open this public hearing at 7:55.
Chairman, you have the sheet in front of you, and I believe there's nobody that's signed up for this.
The one here has signed at all. So I close this public hearing at 7:55. What's the nature of the board?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this change.
All right, motion made by Mr. Barber. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I hope the board approves this, I feel like it will. I'm glad to see this, it was brought to my attention, a constituent I knew correctly by all my life, my neighborhood, passed away Mr. Adams, Calvin Adams, and his family, three days after he passed away, got a notice that they had paid the whole year tax, and it's the end of the year, it was in December, and I, I thought that was unfair. And I'm sorry he didn't get to enjoy this, but I talked to his family, and they, they was very glad that we'd done this going forward, because that's just not fair.
I do appreciate being sensitive to that needs. Is there any further discussion among the board members? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Carries unanimously. Number two, land use late filing ordinance revision, Mr. Vaden Hunt, Esquire.
Yes, again, this is the third or fourth time it's come before you. This proposed change to Pennsylvania County Code 6-12.2 is really sparked by a constituent issue in Mr. Farmer's district. The state code of Virginia allows, under 58.1-3234 subsection 3, that if someone misses the land use filing deadline, it extends that for the, that individual as long as that person pays a late filing penalty, which is proposed to be $100 per parcel in land use, which is similar to other penalties that we have. It allows them to get back into the land use program without having to sit out an entire tax year. This is supported by county staff, it was unanimously supported by the legislative committee, and supported by Ms. Shirley Hammack, our commissioner of the revenue. And these changes are on page 178 of your packet, and it just gives this person no more than 60 days after filing deadline to file a late filing application and pay $100 per qualifying parcel penalty, which will help the county offset some of their administrative costs.
Thank you, Counselor. Have no one signed up? I close the public hearing at 7:57, is that correct?
You need to open it and then close it.
Thought I'd just opened it, okay. Pardon me, I opened this public hearing up at 7:57.
Now you can close it.
Now I'm going to close it. Close it at 7:57.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the revisions to the Pennsylvania County Code Section 12.2 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to again say, I think some of the changes we're making here tonight are very beneficial. I, I had just happened to several people contact me. For some reason or another, I don't know if anybody's ever forgot to pay a bill or misplaced a bill, but this, this could actually get them to roll back. One guy told me he had to do the five-year rollback because he missed the deadline, so I think even though you penalize them, it gives them an option to go forward, because people make mistakes, like miss a bill, they might send it to open or something like that. And I didn't get it, but anyway, I think it's a good thing to do. Thank you.
He sent it to me, I sent it back to him.
So I open this, is that correct?
Yes, you opened and you closed it now, the board just needs to do a vote on the computer. After you get a motion and a second.
I open this, open hearing at 7:59. Is that right, or I'm closing?
You're going to close it.
See, you're getting me a little confused on the second one. Anyway, I thought I'd opened it, closed it. Okay, so anyway, I'm closing this public hearing at 8 o'clock. Okay, Matt Bell? All right. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. You have a motion and a second.
I already have a motion and a second. Y'all pardon me tonight, but I'm telling you, I need me a fifth of NyQuil, because this, this stuff is coming back on me. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Number four, public hearing, Old Blair's Middle School property disposition, Mr. Hicks.
You, you jumped over, which is animal nuisance ordinance.
Pardon me, I almost forgot to get this public hearing animal nuisance ordinance. Mr. Vaden Hunt, Esquire, again.
Yes, this is the third or fourth time the board has seen this. This was a proposed revision to the Pennsylvania County Code to allow for some protection for citizens against animal public nuisances. As you recall, we had a conversation last, at the last legislative committee meeting. The agricultural community has some issues with this, and it's the county's staff's recommendation that you hold a public hearing, but you take no action on this matter. Instead, direct county staff to work directly with county's agricultural community to attempt to come up with a mutually develop, a mutually acceptable language that addresses their concerns and bring it back to the board at a future date. They had concerns about odor issues, they had concerns about opening them up to some harassment by neighbors, and they, they wanted us to use some different words. And I think with communication, and diplomacy, and work with the agricultural community, we can come to a mutually agreeable solution. We're not that far away. So county staff recommends the board hold this public hearing, take no action, and then you have the motion there which directs us to work with the ag community. Massageers, come back with the ordinance that we can live with and they can live with, and then bring it back to the board at the appropriate time.
So I open this one now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I open this at 8:01 PM. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
You have the sheet in front of you, I do not believe anyone has signed up.
I close this public hearing at 8:01.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Mr. Hunt, would this come back to the legislative committee?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take no action related to adoption of the proposed animal public nuisance ordinance, and instead direct county staff to work with the county agricultural community, and the, and Brian Haskins, and the judges that are, have also hampered some of these nuisance issues, and attempted to develop mutually accepted language for potential related revised ordinance to be brought back to the board at an appropriate time in the future for reviewing consideration.
Second. By Mr. Scars, and the second by Mr. Palmer. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, Old Blair's Middle School property disposition, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to bring some information to you on the new business, but by state law, the board supervisors do not dispose of any public property prior to a public hearing. And we've advertised for a public hearing this night regarding the possibility of donating this property to the landmark group. So at this point in time, we're asking that you open the public hearing, and any citizen that's included, if anybody's signed up.
And just to clarify, so nobody's confused, we have three items on here about Old Blair's Middle School. The first item was we had to rezonate, which was successfully done a few minutes ago. This is, the state code requires us to hold a public hearing if we dispose of any interest in publicly owned lands. So this is just fulfilling that requirement. And then, item 12A, that will, we'll bring it back to you, actually, and ask you to approve several documents that would start this donation process potentially. This is just to tick the box, if Virginia Code Section 15.2, 1800, requires us to hold a public hearing before we dispose of any interest in publicly owned property. So just open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Nobody signed up, close it, and then we need a motion, a second discussion, and a vote.
Thank you, Counselor, for making it so simple, I close this. I open this public hearing up at 8:05 PM. None signed up to speak, so I close it at 8:05 PM. What's the nature of the board?
I don't even need a motion at this point in time till we get to 12A.
No, we need a, we, we, we don't need a motion here, we just need to uphold the thing. So now this segues into the first item of new business, which is 12A.
We can close the public hearing, yeah.
I already closed it at 8:05.
Now on 12A.
New business.
Okay. You've heard the presentations this evening, you've rezoned the property, and at this point in time, the staff is recommending that you approve a potential donation of the property to the landmark group by executing or causing the execution by the board of the following documents, which Vaden mentioned. One is a donation agreement, which is in your agenda packet, and that basically gives them a couple of years to get their financing in order. So by chance, if they were not successful in this first funding round, they could come back next year for the second round of funding. The second document is a revitalization resolution, which basically says you want this, this property to be approved. And the third document is a zoning certification letter, which will be signed by Mr. Side saying that the property has been rezoned. And the fourth would be a letter from Mr. Smith and I, CEO, supporting the project. And then the fifth document is an ordinance that will partially exempt the real estate taxes, which would be a 50% tax exemption for three years. So once it's built and become taxable property, you'll basically rebate 50% of those taxes. And at this point in time, we'd like to ask the board to make that motion to approve all the necessary documents.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Dr. Miller.
I would like to move that the board should approve all the necessary documentation for the donation agreement and all the pertinent documents.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, I'll second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion?
All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, approval of emergency generator operations agreement, Mr. Hicks.
The country is, is split into several, what they call regional transmission organizations. And those transmission organizations are responsible for the movement of electricity within that region system. We are a part of the PJM Regional Transmission Organization, and they have contracted with a company called NRG. And they have made a proposal to us to, if something happens on the grid, and they need power, they could call up our emergency generators at our 911 centers, and jail, and courts. They have been doing this for about five years, and the most they could call your generator, that would be for 10 hours at a given time.
During the past five years, all the organizations, they've already signed up, they've never called for that because they've had no problems with the grid. Um, the only requirement is that, once a year, they will call your generator up, and they want it to, you know, to, you know, to be run for an hour at that one time during the year. And if you meet that, that, um, obligation, um, they'll pay us on average at about eight thousand dollars per year. And over a three-year time period, based on the load factor of our generators, uh, we'd give somewhere from thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's just basically operating our generator one hour per year. But, you know, there is the possibility that if something horrible, you know, you know, is on the grid, which is about thirteen, fourteen states, they could call your generator up and ask you to run for at least ten hours. As Mr. Alga, they've done this five years and they've never called one up. And if it gets that bad, where they gotta call up these generators, it's gonna be a pretty bad situation for the grid anyways. So at this point in time, we're asking the board to authorize the county administrator to execute these documents, hopefully within all our three years of bringing in, hopefully by the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. What's the nature of the board on that? Yes, sir, Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize county administrator to execute this agreement.
Motion by Mr. Barber. Second. Second. Seconded by Mr. Scars. Any further discussion?
Just, I have a clarification. So if they do call up and the usage is, say, ten hours a day, uh, the, the rate that they pay us goes up, or is it gonna be at the set, the set, set rate of thirty thousand?
Uh, what they pay you will be based on you using that generator for that single hour at a time. As long as you make that obligation, you get paid.
Right, but I mean.
If you had to go ten hours, they're not gonna pay you anymore.
So the thirty thousand is the set rate forever?
For the next three years, that's what you pay. And they come out after the end of that term, you know, with a different population. This covers this whole, the next three years.
How about in an emergency situation for our county, we were in use of the generator? Do we have an override?
As long as it's on, during that hour, it's enough to you.
Okay.
They just won't, when they call up and say, we need you on that hour, if you're already on, there's no problem.
Yes, sir. But if, if we had a power outage or whatever here, and if we needed a generator for our benefit, that's...
They wouldn't make any difference.
Because the power's out, right on. Okay, got it.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries. Award of engineering contracts for Ringo Trail and Ringo Rail repairs. Mr. Hicks.
You know, we had fairly significant damages to the Ringo Trail. The county also owns the track that runs from the end of the Ringo Trail to the desert park, and we had damage out there to the track. Uh, we met with FEMA, and, um, the county has been approved as a disaster area, and, uh, we've been authorized to, to move forward with pairs of these projects. FEMA ultimately will pay seventy-five percent of the cost. The state will pay twenty percent. The county will be responsible for the five percent. The cost of Ringo Trail, we expect to be in the tens, uh, dollars, maybe two, three, or four million. Um, and to move this project forward, we need an engineer to, to the actual design of the pairs and speed this up and get going as soon as we could. You have before you a proposal from Huber and Associates to do the work on both sites, and it is, the proposed, um, agreement is, is, um, as an addition to an existing on-call agreement with the Western Piedmont Plan District Commission. So if the county is a member of that district commission, we could sign on, you know, under the existing contract. So the proposal for the rail trail is a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars to do the things that's supposed to add work. And the railroad track, the engineering estimate there is thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And that will allow us to go and get this project, kind of like, fix those to Huber as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the county administrator to execute the attached agreements with Huber as presented in the board act.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock, the second. Seconded by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion?
I have one question. Um, I guess it's directed at Mr. Seitz. What about the tracks over the very deal? Is that, did FEMA, if they only looked at that, you know, tracks, Alan, I guess you're aware of that?
I, I have heard that through the rail people, but I don't think the county's looked at any of that. I think the rail itself has.
That's not our line, so they'll have to do that.
Well, we need them desperately.
And we'll have to make those repairs themselves. It's not helpful if FEMA offer them.
Okay, so FEMA's not gonna cover that, is it?
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item D, Center for Initiative Technology Facilitation, County Broadband Initiative. Mr. Seitz.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this board has heard and has discussed numerous times about the importance of broadband internet access throughout the county. Uh, we've got a lot of activity in that field that we are working with, a company that's utilizing our towers at this point. We've also, we're partnering with other, uh, businesses and other internet projects around the county. So we had the discussion that we really need an overall broadband plan, comprehensive plan, to make sure that all of these various individual projects work together, fit together, and everybody's rowing in the same direction. So we reached out to the Center for Innovative Technology, which is probably better known in Virginia as CIT, and they provide services to localities of helping step us through a broadband plan, where they look at the needs, they look at the partners, they look at, uh, you know, setting strategy long-term. There is no cost to the county for their participation or assistance in this program. All they have required of us is the motion that's in your packet. They simply need a motion from this board, uh, offering a request and to partner with them on this broadband initiative study.
Thank you, Mr. Seitz. What's the petition of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve partner, partnering with the Center of Innovative Technology in facilitating the county's broadband initiative.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion on this?
This is, uh, something, uh, I've been, I'm aware of, I knew I was aware of this, and I've been contacted for a lot of support, but Mecklenburg Electric is looking at providing fiber optic, uh, in their area of coverage, uh, mo- mostly in the northern end of the county. They've asked for a lot of the coordination. I guess they probably should be a part of this with CIT.
Uh, yes, sir, we're gonna be engaging. Um, there's at least three broadband providers in the county currently. Mecklenburg certainly will be at the table. Um, and related to the matter you're discussing, Mr. Seitz and I are meeting with Mecklenburg tomorrow afternoon to better understand their current grant application and how that might fit in our bigger strategy. And assuming it goes exactly what we expected, uh, we'll be offering a letter of support for the county. And school boards will ask. And the election of a, how that works.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Twelve E, Legislative Committee Recommendation, Fire and EMS, Mr. J. Vaden Hunt, Squire.
Uh, yes, uh, as you recall, at the, uh, March seventh, two thousand and nineteen Legislative Committee, the Legislative Committee, uh, received a report from Mr. Schlump, our Public Safety Director, regarding the ad hoc committee's work on the new public safety ordinance. Uh, Schlump and Supervisor Scars updated the Legislative Committee on many items proposed and suggested that the final draft would likely be available to the board for adoption at its May business meeting. After discussion, Supervisor Scars, seconded by Supervisor Barber, moved that the proposed fire and rescue commission be comprised of no more than nine members, eliminating the EMS-only and law enforcement members specified in the proposed draft, and that the board retain authority to appoint any and all citizen appointees to the proposed commission. Um, this recommendation was passed unanimously by the Legislative Committee to the full board for approval tonight. County staff recommends that the full board endorse the Legislative Committee's unanimous recommendation that the proposed fire and rescue orders be comprised of no more than nine members, eliminating the EMS-only and law enforcement members specified in the proposed draft, and that the board retain authority to appoint citizen appointees to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, do we need a motion on that, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir. And, uh, a suggested motion, if the board so desires, should be contained in the handout that was, uh, given to, I believe, uh...
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scars.
I'd like to make a motion that the proposed fire and rescue commission be comprised of no more than nine members, eliminating the EMS-only and law enforcement members specified in the attached proposed draft, and that the board retain authority to appoint the citizens, citizen appointees to the commission.
I have a motion by Mr. Scars, the second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there any further discussion?
Can we take us back to the, uh, Fire and Rescue Association to see if they were okay with this change?
This is probably gonna go to the ad hoc committee and then in fact to the Fire Association for approval before it comes back to the, uh, to the board. Please cast my answer. Please, Chris. Mr. Hunt?
Uh, yes, this would just be, um, a recommendation so Mr. Schlump could take this to the moderator in the ad hoc committee. They would chew on this, and then ultimately, a final draft of proposed ordinance would make its, uh, way back to the Fire and Rescue Committee, that ultimately would go through the Legislative Committee, back to the full board for approval. Uh, Mr. Schlump has indicated that his timeframe for that is sometime around the May business meeting to get this thing handed out.
Okay, so what we basically doing is just voting to send it back.
Correct.
Not the final approval. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. We have a further discussion. Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, appointments. The DSS Board, Stan River District, Mr. Blackstock.
Uh, Mr. Payne's resignation, Stedman Payne's resignation, have a position on the, for my district, uh, that expires June, in June, but I'll go and put somebody on there for a short period of time. I'm making a motion that we appoint Christopher Barber to the Pennsylvania County Department Board of Social Services with affiliate unexpired term, uh, set to expire in June of two thousand and nineteen.
I have a motion, the second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, Appointment, Pennsylvania County Service Authority, Mr. Barber.
I'll take a hold of this. Um, Mr. Barber currently serves on the Pennsylvania County Service Authority. His term is set to expire on the thirty-first of March, and he is eligible for a longer four-year term. We're giving off April first. This is a full board appointment, so it is up to you all to make this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Barber to the Service Authority for a four-year term starting in April, on April first, two thousand and nineteen.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scars. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Okay, unanimously. Item C, appointments for the Pennsylvania County Service Authority, Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Willie Fitzgerald, who serves on the Pennsylvania County Service Authority, and Mr. Fitzgerald's term is from the Friday, March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and, uh, I believe he's eligible for another four years. And, um, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint him on four-year terms starting on April first. Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, the second by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen, matters from the work session, if any. Do we have any matters from the work session?
We need them.
Yep.
We're coming to that one, yeah.
We have fourteen, eight, eight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, at the work session today, we discussed, uh, a way to streamline the local approval process for power transmission lines for industrial parks. We had representatives from AEP and our economic director that talked about the need for making this process work smoothly and family. Um, we discussed some, adding some proposed language to a current section of our zoning ordinance that refers to exemptions to the zoning ordinance. Uh, it was suggested that there be a modification to be sure that, in all cases, there could still be or would still be a public hearing by the board of supervisors so that residents and property owners would have a chance to share their views. So what I had given out to you, uh, prior to the meeting tonight, is revised language that, uh, adds that request to the language you had at the work session today. So I will, uh, just briefly indicate that the suggested language is electrical transmission, this is, uh, structures to be exempt from the zoning ordinance. Electrical transmission line size one thirty-eight kilovolt or less, constructed to serve a properly zoned industrial park, shall be exempt from this zoning ordinance with approval subject to a public hearing and vote by the board of supervisors. So, uh, I'll certainly welcome your discussion, but I'll just make the comment that the motion that's in your, uh, package tonight, uh, is suitable as is because it refers to proposed language, and what I handed out to you and just read is now the proposed language. And to explain the length of that motion, uh, we are referring this to the planning commission, but because by state code, to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance, the board of supervisors recommends that to the planning commission. The planning commission holds a public hearing and discusses it, then they make a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and board of supervisors holds a public hearing and actually votes. So your motion tonight is, is structured in that manner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion recommending the proposed amendments to section thirty-five dash fifty of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance be referred to the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission for a public hearing at the April second, two thousand and nineteen meeting, and authorizing county staff to advertise the attached proposed revisions to Pennsylvania Code, section thirty-five dash fifty, for a public hearing for potential adoption at the April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen board of supervisors business meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farmer. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I'll now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fifteen... Item 15, Board Member Reports. Start with Mr. Barber, you got anything?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm saying he's handled it like pretty good, he's got a lot on the plate.
Oh, thank you so kindly. Uh, Mr. Barber, Mr. Blackstock?
I don't have any drink tonight.
I like your glasses, though. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock, how about Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I would just like to make the public aware that on April the 4th, I'm gonna, along with county staff, we're gonna hold a community meeting regarding STS broadband. I've had several citizens request an update on where the county stood, especially in the county's current district. So this will be at the high school at 7:00 PM on April the 4th, and it'll be county staff there as well as STS broadband representatives.
Okay, I like the tie and the suit, it's good. Yes, sir, Mr. Scares.
I just wanted to give an update, we had our Friends of NRA banquet on the 28th of February, and while the full numbers aren't in yet, we cleared, we netted over $60,000, and I just want to make sure everyone knows that that money stays in our, in our area, and it goes to help with the shooting supports, whether it's Boy Scouts or, or school ROTCs. So it's, had a great time and it was a great, a great day, but, thank you, sir.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, sir. I would like to speak in terms of appreciation to all the members of the board and the very positive way that everybody is deporting themselves in terms of the respect and support of the minority community. And the fact is that I'm not, well, I am, I am a minority, and I'm a, a member of the minority community. And the fact is essentially this, that when, when everybody sees that putting the shoulder to positive things is done, that brings everybody closer together and we can work for common goal. And I'd like everybody to know from my position that that's very much appreciated. And I, and I take every opportunity to communicate the same to members of our respective community.
Thank you for adding a voice to the African community, American community, I do appreciate it. I would like to say in conclusion, I want to thank the staff, counselor helping me, Mr. Seitz helping me, Kaylin, the board of supervisors, Elton, Blackstock, even you, Matt, Bell, and then, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is not a very easy job, I'm not complaining, I need to have a drink or a fifth of Nyquil, because this, this flu I thought was over with, but apparently it's still clouding my, my mind. My wife says she agrees with that always. So I want to thank you for showing and coming tonight and being a part of this, thank you. Mr. Uh, who is our, who, who is that gentleman in the very back?
Shorter.
Mr. Shorter, you left today before I got a chance to recognize you at the work session, so thank you for being here and everyone else. Do we have anything from the staff, such as the county attorney?
No, sir.
And now, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, I just want to remind everyone that we're gonna be holding four community budget meetings beginning March 14th at Dan River High School, March 19th at Breton High School, March 21st at Tonstall High School, and March 26th at Chatham High School. All these meetings start at 6 o'clock, and we certainly welcome every citizen to come out and hear about the proposed FY 2020 budget. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There being no other matters to discuss, I adjourn this meeting at 8:35.